Good evening and welcome to Planning Commission hearing for November 12th. And this evening, we'll call the meeting to order at this point and ask for any public comment on items not listed on the agenda. Seeing none, move forward into our first hearing, which is CP 07-01. And this is a master plan for the Clackamas Community College. Tony, you just want to move forward with a recommendation on that?
Sure. We're still working with the college on the transportation impacts and mitigation. So we're requesting, the college actually requested a continuance from tonight's hearing to December 10th, 2007. The record will remain open during that time.
Okay. I'm open for a motion to move, to continue this public hearing to a date certain of December 10th, 2007.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Tony, call roll, please.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Commissioner Lejoie?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Gruner?
Aye.
Chairperson Paul?
Aye. Thank you very much. Let's move on to MD 0703, which is a modification of a currently approved PUD. And it's like I'm going to read my information here, so bear with me. At this time, a staff report has been prepared for the application and has been made available seven days prior to this evening's hearing. This staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to the applicant's proposal. If anyone would like me to read those criteria, please let me know. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report along with any written comments and input that has been received through the public notification process for the application. The quasi judicial hearing procedure the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart to my left. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a slip and give it to the planning staff prior to the hearing or before you speak. All letters, reports, or pictures must be marked as an exhibit by the planning staff before they can be submitted into the record. For the public record, please begin all testimony by stating your name and city of residence. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe any other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person does not have to testify in order to submit written materials of any length while the public record is open on each application. However, any party wishing for a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request before the public hearing is closed. If the Planning Commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue which you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the commission's consideration. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence so that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be adjudged appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, Oregon revised statutes 197-796 requires us to announce the following. The failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. I think, can commissioners have any ex parte contact, conflict of interest, best or any other statement to declare?
Are we also talking about Beaver Creek at this point?
Not yet.
Not yet.
We'll go to the next one.
Okay. Nothing then? I visited the site today.
Okay. All right. At this point, then, as usual, start this evening's report with a staff report. From Tony?
Okay, thank you. Chairperson Paul, evening commissioners. The applicant is requesting to modify Condition of Approval 41 for the approved Rose Road Plan Unit Development identified as PD 0402. That application was heard before the Planning Commission and then went up to City Commission on appeal where the appeal was approved, or I'm sorry, the appeal was denied and the application was approved with conditions of approval. The subject site is located at the intersection of Rose Road and South End Road. The applicant has received approval for 67 dwelling units. It includes 49 detached and 18 attached units. And four of those have been identified to be vacant for a minimum of five years within that subdivision. The application includes a variety of housing types, single-family detached/attached homes, open space to protect existing wetlands and stream corridor through the property, and it has both public and private roads within the development itself which are allowed through that plan unit development process. So what the applicant has requested is, through our land use application forums, is a modification to a previous condition of approval. So what we've done in the staff report is identified which criteria from the previous application Condition of Approval 41 was attached to, and that is the standard that we are reviewing as part of this application. This isn't opening up the whole application again. We're addressing criteria that we believe are applicable to the condition of approval that was attached to the application. And there was just one in that PUD section of the code, which actually does not exist anymore at this time, but we went back to that since that was the application that was used to approve this land use action. Condition of Approval 41. What this dealt with was, as part of the PUD process, the applicant is allowed to transfer density out of the resource areas thereby allowing smaller lot sizes to be created than the zoning allowed, than would be allowed. So what has happened with that smaller, with that allowance for a smaller lot size and setbacks, the commission has the ability to attach conditions of approval to help mitigate any impacts associated with reducing those lot sizes and setbacks. And the commission found that attaching design guidelines for the single-family attached and detached homes concerning the front facade and garage size was appropriate in order to mitigate the reduction in lot size and transfer of that density on this project. This was actually the conditions that were written concerning, the garage wall of the detached and attached units should be limited to 40% of the length of the street-facing building facade. Where the street-facing facade of the building is less than 30 feet long, the garage wall facing the street may be up to 12 feet long if there is one of the following. An interior living area above the garage, the living area must be set back no more than four feet from the street-facing garage wall, or a covered balcony above the garage at at least the same length as the street-facing garage wall, at least six feet deep and accessible from the interior living area of the dwelling unit. When this was, condition was attached, we had not been through our concept plan and code updates, and we did not have Section 1720, which is our, which is our housing design standards, which specifically dealt with garage widths and lengths. So when this was written, it was written by staff as a recommendation to the Planning Commission and City Commission. We used this same template when we created 1720 and started to go through the public process. And the language is almost identical except for it's now, instead of a 40%, it's 50%. So once we started working with the builders and the community and went through public comment, that number actually, the percentage increased. So this was staff's first attempt, before any code was written, to try and address homes that were dominated by either majority garage or garages that were set 12, 15, 18 feet in front of the front facade, snout houses. So that being said, the applicant submitted 26, 25 diagrams of housing types that they would like to see in this subdivision to be approved that don't meet that 40% criteria. And what they've, what they've requested is that we will either meet Condition 41 as was written, or we will give staff discretion to determine if the housing design we bring in to build meets the intent of these 25 diagrams that they've submitted. So it gives us the ability to review it in the context of these housing types that they've submitted, and majority of these meet our current 1720 design standards. This is the, this is what we were looking for. We did identify one housing plan. It was number 22114 in your packet that staff recommended we just remove from the lot of options just because it appeared to be a snout house design. No reason to even allow it. So if there's any discussion with builders when they come in saying, "Look, it's in the packet. We believe it meets it. We'll just remove it." I believe that all the other homes meet the intent of the condition as it was written and approved, and also meets the intent of 1720 as it's written today. So with that, we are recommending that the Condition of Approval be amended to include the additional option that states, "Or the applicant may submit for an alternative housing design review. Staff shall, with sole discretion, determine if the proposed home is in compliance with the diagram submitted by the applicant and included as Exhibit 2, with the exception of Plan Number 22114. All homes shall be designed to reflect similar architectural character to those diagrams submitted as Exhibits 1 and 2. The home shall feature emphasized entryways and porches, complex roof lines, window treatment, and the use of at least two complementary siding materials. The commission finds that the proposed housing design diagrams submitted by the applicant are appropriate to mitigate the impacts of the setback in lot size reductions approved in PD 0402, with the exception of Plan 22114. The commission directs staff to not approve any housing designs similar to Plan 2214, which represents a snout house type of design, which is not consistent with pedestrian-friendly design of the subdivision." With that, I will conclude my presentation and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Tony, thank you. Questions? Staff?
Of the ones that were, you said most of them would comply with the current code? Are there some that do not, or they're just on the edge of?
Well, we, we didn't have the specific lengths and widths to do the exact measurements that we would do when someone submits for a detailed site plan of a single-family home. They're all very, very close to meeting our code, probably within a foot. So percentage-wise, it's very, very minimal.
All right. Okay.
Yeah?
So currently, what's, what we're reading here about the 40% is a holdover from a ways back, right? Is that right?
It was created specifically for this PUD. We did not have anything on the books concerning housing design or garage width. So we made one up.
Okay. So that was created back then. The code now reads 50%.
Correct.
And some other things.
Correct. Yes.
And, but we don't have that. What does the current code say?
Oh, I'm sorry. You do, actually. It's right here.
Oh, I missed it.
It's the very, very last three pages.
That's right here.
Okay, I missed it. Where can I have it?
So we do offer 50% and even up to 60% in our current code of a garage. A garage could be 60% of the facade as long as it's set back X feet from the front facade. So it actually, our current code actually offers quite a bit of flexibility, but nothing as restrictive as that 40% exists today in our current code.
It seemed to me that there was a lot of, when we wrote this or talked about this originally, there were a lot of requirements that had to be met for that, even 50 or 60%, right? So, you know, and it seemed like recessed doorways were not going to be allowed, and you were able to give up one to get another. And so you're saying that, looking at these, these designs currently, all of those will meet those guidelines?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Because I know, I looked at one, 22137B, and that's, that's a recessed entryway, and then I thought I saw another one. And I guess, looking at that, there are, you know, the dormers, they do have the living, living area over the garage.
By the time you walk through that checklist, it's a very generous checklist of options to include.
Yeah.
You know, they're providing multiple, multiple materials, multiple peaks to the home, living space above the garage. The garage is actually recessed a little bit from the front of the, from the den. So these are...
Yeah. The only one that I disagreed with was the one you picked out, the 22114. I mean, I just didn't think that fit in at all, and I think that's exactly right. So all, all the other ones I certainly could live with.
I also, you know, staff is, we did, you know, some of these housing designs have three-car garages. We're pretty comfortable that the lot widths are not sufficient to provide a three-car garage and still meet the den non-garage living space area design. And with sole discretion as staff to make that decision, we feel comfortable that we can implement that.
Tony, can you describe, what's Exhibit 1? I see Exhibit 2 listed a couple places, and I see Exhibit 1 and 2 listed in another place. And I just assumed that all the diagrams were submitted as Exhibit 2 and was just wondering what Exhibit 1 was.
I'm sorry. I think I wrote Attachment 1. So it was the, it'll be after the revised Condition of Approval, page 5 of 5 of the staff report. The next one, it says Attachment 1, and it's the land use application and the applicant's narrative requesting the modification.
Thank you.
Yeah, I referenced them as attachments rather than exhibits. Apologize for that. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. At this time, applicant, feel free to come forward.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner. My name is Michael Hammons, Damascus, Oregon. I fully support staff's recommendation. And actually, just came in case there were any questions. Had I been paying close enough attention, I wouldn't even have submitted the one that staff recommended to take out because I agree with it completely. And it sounds like your code, it was always my thought that, that these housing types you would think would fit with what you were trying to do, and I'm glad to hear that your, your code has changed to allow it because our goal was just to put some good-looking houses in there. And that particular 40% garage was extremely restrictive for us. It was hard to find that single wide garage, double-deep, to get people to buy it. So if there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer it.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant at this point? No, I think you're, thank you very much for coming up. All right. At this time, Tony, do we have any, anyone in the audience that would like to speak for, against, or either way on this application? If so, feel free. No? Ma'am, would you come on up and, and I need to get you on the record?
I'd be interested.
That's all right. We...
I'd have a spin to any of the...
Okay. Just if you'll give me your name and add, and city of residence.
My name is Sharon Felix, and we live on Lafayette, next to the development.
Okay.
And so I, I was curious about the modifications, so that's why I came. Is there a way that I can get a, some kind of a diagram of what the development's going to look like?
Sure. I believe we probably got that on record somewhere. Tony, Tony can get that for you and show you what the, the PUD application looked like, and there's, I'm sure we can get that. If you'll give Tony your information, address, and phone, he could probably get that sent out to you.
That would be good. Okay. I was curious about what the modifications were and what the picture was going to be.
Sure.
I guess, you know, out on the table out here, we have the housing designs that they're modifying. So that is actually in this packet on the table out here you can look at. So if that's what you're looking for, it's available right there. If you're looking for the actual street designs and lotting pattern...
I'm looking for that.
Okay. We'll, we'll need your contact information, and we can put that together for you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thanks for coming up. Anyone else at this point? No? Okay. Then I will close the public hearing and bring up the commission for discussion.
It looks like a straightforward request to modify a term of condition, and I think that Mr. Conkle did a good job explaining why the modification is needed, and I think he did a good job picking out the snout nose house from the collection, so.
Oh, yeah, it was the test. Anyone else? All right. Then I will look for a motion.
I'll move to approve MD 0703, based on the staff's recommended modification to Approval Number 41 for the Plan Unit Development, PD 0402.
I second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Tony?
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Gruner?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Commissioner Lejoie?
Aye.
Chairperson Paul?
Aye. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming up.
So we're like 10 minutes ahead of schedule?
Okay. So we need to wait to take a, we'll take a 10-minute break because we did notice that the next meeting would not start before 7:30. So we'll wait till that happens.
Great.
So we are on a break. Yeah. It's L 0702, and this is a continuation of a Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. And at this time, then, we will move forward. And Tony, let you give a, no, because it's a, it's a continuation. Go ahead.
Okay. If we'd like to, if you'd like to say that you visited the site or anything like that...
Oh, sure.
Actually, I would, I want to declare something.
Okay.
Because I attended a couple of work sessions, charrette sessions, for the Beaver Creek Concept Plan over the last couple of weeks. And so basically, the applicant and several of their consultants continue to move forward with the project and ideas and things like that as this is going through this project and, or as it's going through this process. And I attended two of their sort of work sessions, charrettes, as an observer only. So I just want to put that on the record. I would like to say that I did have the opportunity to view the videotape from the October 22nd Planning Commission meeting when I was absent. So I saw both the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan discussion and presentations, as well as the Clackamas Community College presentations as well.
Okay. Are there any questions of Commissioner Lejoie? Or, well, I guess it really wouldn't be of Commissioner Stein? Okay, Tony.
Thank you, Commissioner. So we did continue the public hearing from October 22nd tonight, and the commission asked staff to prepare some responses to the four issues raised by Herberger family and their representatives, as well as some of the other issues raised throughout the public hearing process that we've heard to date. So staff did prepare a memo dated November 5th, 2007, trying to address the issues that we believe relevant, that you directed us to, to respond to. And then we also attached, Attachment 1 is a memorandum dated November 6th from Joe Dills, our consultant from OTAC on this project, with revised, revised language to be included in the concept plan. I'd be happy to address those as we move through the public hearing tonight. The first issue and the third issue, the first issue raised dealt with the Ridge Parkway location on the concept plan. We have it located right along the east ridge of the property in the east mixed-use neighborhood, right above the 490-foot elevation. The, the property owners were looking for a little more flexibility on where that road was located in relation to that ridge line to allow additional development in that area or to pull that road away from that ridge to offer some different development options utilizing both sides of that roadway. And then issue number three was the amount of open space, and we were requested to clarify how much of that area below the 490 ridge line, we're showing it as environmentally sensitive area, how much of that is actually Gulf 5 resource, water resource overlay, open space, public land, public park space. So we did meet with the property owner's representative. As for the, the issues that were raised, we are recommending, because of the, the public amenity that could be provided in this area, it's a great viewpoint from that area to draw the public to that area. We did, we looked at the, the distance along that ridge line. It's approximately 1,400 feet. We're recommending that half of it include unobscured public access and views along that ridge line, and then the remaining 700 feet can be moved further west into the site to accommodate what the applicant would like to do with the property through the master plan process. We are recommending, we are not identifying a specific 700 feet where it needs to be. That will be done through the master plan process. It will be contiguous 700-foot. And then there would also be two other viewpoints included as depicted on the concept plan to be included in the, in any application on the property. We believe it's an important area for maintaining public access to public views, public access down into Thimble Creek area. It's, there's also difficulties providing public sewer down into that area, looking at additional pump stations to get sewer out of there for any development in that area. Those were the reasons that we were recommending staying above the 490-foot elevation. There are also some areas of, that showed up on the LiDAR mapping for potential slide or historic slide areas. But through a geological review of the site, you know, access into that area and development could be feasible. So by allowing this flexibility, it doesn't mean that it will happen, but it does offer that, that it could happen. The applicant identified a possible solution for, rather than identifying the whole area below 490 off-limits for development, would be to realign the, the area to match the identified Gulf 5 resource riparian area around Thimble Creek and then add a 200-foot average buffer and allow the remainder of the area west and below the ridge to be incorporated with plantings and mixed uses in that area. What staff is recommending is that we allow limited non-residential development below the 490 elevation on a maximum of 50% of the non-resource lands to allow eco-friendly development to occur and provide opportunities for public-private partnerships where appropriate to rehabilitate the resources and habitat. We did attach in the memorandum on Attachment 1 proposed language changes that would incorporate and allow this in the concept plan. The second issue raised was the location and size of the Central Park. We're showing it as 18-acre corridor down the middle. The intent was to allow flexibility in the sizing and location of that park through this concept plan. The goal being that it be a contiguous, open space that links neighborhoods together, allows alternative transportation modes, biking, walking through the area, and that it, that it does actually use the natural features of the site that would be detailed in the master planning process. Our goal is to have no less than 18 acres. What we are recommending is that we do change that rather than a, a number of 18 acres. We're tying it to acres per population. We've spoke with Scott Archer, Parks and Community Services Director, and that was the recommendation. We have a goal identified in our Parks and Rec Master Plan of 422 acres of parks and open space in Oregon City to meet the 2006 Oregon Recreation and Parks Association. And so we are, that comes out to 16 acres per 1,000 population is necessary to meet that goal. So that would be the, the goal that we'd be attaching to this concept plan for park space in this area rather than an 18-acre, no less, which is currently written. So we are recommending that change. We would also, you know, clarify that we believe that it does allow the flexibility to relocate that open space or the Central Park, to redesign it through the master plan process. And I think that we have made the changes necessary to address this request. The fourth issue raised concerns, one, creating one residential mixed-use zone, expand the main street further east, and allow the zoning designations to be postponed until the master planning has been completed. These changes are necessary to integrate the main street into the surrounding uses and provide a better mix of housing densities. Through this process, the purpose of the small mixed-use center was to provide a focal point for pedestrian activity at the Glen Oak Beaver Creek intersection. The main street allows for small-scale commercial and mix of uses that serve the daily needs of the surrounding community. It was not intended to be a regional draw. That's why the actual retail amount was limited as, to the size and the amount of commercial that, retail that could be built in the main street area. We are... We are proposing to add language to allow, in essence, density transfers across the site. We're, we're going to identify, we're proposing to identify the neighbors on the, the neighborhoods on the concept plan in order to determine the densities allowed. Right now, the mixed, the mixed, the west mixed-use neighborhood is approximately our R2 zone, it's 22 units per acre, and the east mixed neighborhood is in our five zoning designation that we're going to create. So we'll identify those on the concept plan to identify the number of units allowed per tax lot. But then, when a master plan comes in, they'll be able to, through the designation of one Beaver Creek zone with sub-districts on it, be able to mix those densities across tax lots, across identified areas on the concept plan. So it'll allow that flexibility to create larger lots, single-family, smaller lots, single-family detached, single-family attached, which I believe is what the applicant was looking for. We also believe that the Main Street can extend further east through the master plan provided, process, provided the Main Street uses are, provided at the intersection of Beaver Creek and Glen Oak. Staff does not recommend increasing the maximum amount of retail allowed in the Main Street area, which was established to provide services to the community. If additional square footages of commercial, retail were added, staff believes the area would begin to become a regional draw, rather than serving the local community, thereby increasing the impact on Beaver Creek Road and the rest of the transportation system. As for 4C concerning delaying the zoning, designating the property with zoning upon annexation, we believe that through, creating one zone with sub-districts addresses the issue, because that flexibility of transferring densities across tax lot lines is envisioned to be allowed. We will be bringing this back in February with the specific zoning language to implement this. So we believe that we will be able to address those concerns through the zoning process. Other issues raised through the public hearing process include the amount of residential employment lands within the concept plan. Comments were submitted that it's too much residential, that it does not exist in the city, that those densities in the land was intended for employment when the UGB was expanded. Just to refresh everyone's memory, Metro brought in approximately 245 gross acres into the urban growth boundary in 2002 and 2004 to fulfill the regional industrial employment needs. Metro I O estimated an absolute minimum of 120 net acres of the concept plan area would be necessary to meet the Title IV employment needs, and indicated that it was important to fulfill the original intent for providing industrial lands, and that there was flexibility in, within the local process to evaluate creative ways to meet this intent. Through the, through the concept planning process with the citizen advisory committees, we looked at several alternatives for land uses and the breakdown of how many acres should be allowed per use, how we were going to utilize existing constrained areas such as underneath the power lines, how much of that acreage should account, should count towards meeting employment goals for such uses as parking areas, stormwater detention, storage for industrial employment uses that would occur up in that area. Metro was, a Metro representative was on, was on the advisory committee and was involved in the process, and has been supportive of the plan to date. And the final hybrid had approximately 127 net acres of north employment campus, exceeding the 120 identified by Metro as an absolute minimum. So we believe that we have met the intent of what this area was brought into the urban growth boundary for. I think it's also important to note that we are not proposing any higher densities within the area than are already allowed within Oregon City, where we're relying on our R2, 22-unit-per-acre density. And that the, the overall numbers identified in the concept plan that will result include approximately 33 jobs per net developer acre and approximately 10.3 dwelling units per net developable acre. The lack of school facilities, Roger Rata, the Oregon City Public School Superintendent, submitted a memorandum into the record dated June 6th, 2007. He also, he did not give testimony during the Beaver Creek Concept Planning Process. He submitted the same letter that he submitted for Park Place Concept Plan, but he, he did give testimony during the Park Place Concept Plan. And he did indicate that they are creating a Facilities Task Force, of which Oregon City is a representative on, to review the school situation in Oregon City and the surrounding area, and the need for any additional lands or buildings. There is currently an Oregon City public school property directly adjacent and south of the concept planning area in Beaver Creek Road, a vacant lot that exists down there, owned by the school district. So staff believes we've met the requirement for Metro, for Title 11 concerning addressing the need for school lands within the, the concept plan area. Lack of citizen involvement and sustainable concepts. I think we, you may remember that we talked about, we held several meetings over the last 15 months, included a 15-member citizen advisory committee and a nine-member technical advisory committee made up of property owners, neighbors, interest groups such as Beaver Creek, Hamlet of Beaver Creek, neighbors on the other side of Glen Oak Road, the school district, TriMet, Metro, Clackamas County Transportation, Oregon City Engineering Department, and our other, our other public support departments. We've held several open houses, design workshops, charrettes. We've had a, and the information has been available on the website. We've kept a continuous mailing through the, through the concept planning process, as well as the public hearing process, to anyone who's commented or participated and provided us with their contact information, whether that be via email or mailing. We've noticed it in the paper, and we've had signs out on the roadway. We believe that we have provided extensive opportunity for citizen involvement and comment through the concept planning process, as well as through the public hearing process that is ongoing, and will, will continue to ongoing through the city commission. As far as sustainability, creating a sustainable society and a sustainable concept plan was one of the major goals identified, and there was significant amount of time spent on this issue at the committee level, identifying sustainable practice goals that are incorporated into the concept plan throughout. Alternative stormwater design for public infrastructure, a three-tiered system which is unique, it does not exist in Oregon City currently, to address stormwater on-site, how to address stormwater through green street design of the public streets, utilizing regional, regional systems rather than small ponds at every, at every subdivision. We've also, the committee also recommended creating a advisory group to review the, the opportunity for lead or other green building designs for single-family housing, multifamily housing, industrial, commercial. Where should it be required? Where shouldn't it be required? Which standards are we going to utilize? So I believe that a lot of thought has gone into trying to create sustainable design practices within this development. Lack of funds to provide infrastructure. Through the concept planning process, we've gone through and preliminary identified the needs for water, sanitary sewer, transportation, all the infrastructure that needs to be incorporated into this area, as well as offsite improvements along the 213 corridor, Beaver Creek Road, Highway 213 intersection. And as part of this process, we'll be updating our master plans to recuperate and to identify those improvements, as well as incorporate those into our system development charges to make sure that we can start to account for those, those impacts and those needed upgrades that are going to occur. I think it's important to note that as development within the site occurs, the developer will be building the local roads and the local infrastructure. The, the main deficiencies we've identified in the transportation system are regional and the improvements that need to occur. But, you know, this development will obviously contribute to that, and those, those costs of those, those upgrades that are necessary to Beaver Creek Road or, Loder Road or 213 or the 205 interchange will be incorporated, as I stated, in the new transportation system plan SDC fees and the transportation system plan when we update it. As I stated earlier, we did include the memorandum from Joe Dills dated November 6th, and he has included changes to the current concept plan that you have documented that incorporate the recommendations that I've identified in this memorandum. So with that, I think I will, I'll conclude and open it up to any questions you may have of myself, and Joe is here to answer any questions you may have as well.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Any questions?
Yeah, on the language that Joe submitted on the first page, the 50%, it states there's a minimum of 50% of the conservation area must be open space. What's allowed in the other part? It's non-residential, but what sort of things are you envisioning, or is the committee envisioning for that? Does that make?
You know, the way the, the property owners have described is some type of eco-friendly, sustainable type of use down there that would support the natural area. Specific uses, we haven't nailed them all down yet.
Yeah, the problem is the word sustainability, and it's pretty loosely thrown around. I guess, I like what you're, what's proposed here, I just, if there's some ideas, it would be nice to know kind of what we're thinking of, but that's fine, go with that.
And I'm sure the, the property owner will be sure to
Okay.
expand on the thoughts for that area.
Right, that's what I was looking for.
Go ahead.
Is the 16 acres per thousand population specific to the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, or is that something that applies citywide?
The intent is that it would be, it's a goal citywide.
So it's, it would be a change to the existing comprehensive plan for the city?
Correct.
Is that true?
Correct.
I've got a couple of questions about some things that weren't in the staff report. And I've been out to the, to the golf course a lot, and the ponds out there with, with big fountains. Was wondering, have the, have the, have the ponds or the well water that, that runs those fountains been identified as, as natural resources at all?
No, I do not believe that they have been.
Should they be?
I, being that they're man-made, you know, they may have been historic. I guess I don't have the, the full history of what they originally were. I'm not sure, you know.
Is that something that's decided at the master plan stage then?
It could be, it could be at the master plan process. What we get into though, for example, Two's Pond, okay? The state doesn't consider that a pond. They consider it for grazing animals. So it's not regulated by the state. So it gets into this tricky area where you knew you had a, a previous little creek through there, much as you have on the other side of 213 along Glen Oak Road and below the pond. You know, it's a, it's a 10-foot wide resource at the most. And then you have this pond of which isn't regulated at the state level. So we, it's hard to classify what, what you do with these man-made situations like that.
How about the well, the well water that, that's currently used out there at the golf course for irrigation?
Have we done?
Will that be available in the development process by, by whoever's going to be doing the develop, developing?
I guess it depends what it would be used for. We would be putting them on to city water, unless there was some type of a request to deviate from our existing standards. You know, but, you know, that well water could be used for many other things, whether it be, you know, gray water irrigation, other uses that are, that are non-podable.
There are any thermal value to that, it could be used for as geothermal?
Certainly would be part of the application, yes.
Source. Uh huh. One of the, one of the issues that was, was raised, I think you've addressed it in, in terms of, of your staff report tonight, but was curious whether or not there's a legal requirement involved in the sequencing of, of adopting the concept planning process and adopting the zone changes that are related to it. Are they tied together somehow, or is it, is kind of a staff scheduling convenience to, to, to do the, do the zoning before master plans have been developed?
So, yes. We're going to have, we're going to have the concept plans go through the process, you know, identify any changes that, that need to be made to the concept plan which will affect proposed zoning language changes. We decided to separate the two because it was just so much information. So the master plans, there is no master plan process until we get that zoning written in this area. So for all intents and purposes, we adopt the concept plan, and there will not be any development occurring until we get that zoning accomplished.
And that's, that's a legal restriction, as I understand it.
Yes, because we won't have a zoning designation to give the property.
Right. And finally, the, the idea of the city investigating an opportunity to create an eco-enterprise zone, I think was mentioned in, in the Planning Commission hearings, and was wondering, has the city looked into any opportunities to apply, apply that type of designation to this area?
Uh, no, we have not.
Okay, is that at the discretion of the city commission?
I believe, it could be at the discretion of the city commission, it could be at the discretion of the Planning Commission to direct us to look into it more, take it to the city commission. As part of, if this moves forward with that, with the group to, creating the subcommittee to look at lead or other sustainable design types that might be able to be put into that to review at that point, you know, what the financial impacts are of creating such a zone, how it would work, how it functioned, how others have succeeded. But we have not done that to date.
Okay, it, it might be the case that the, the Planning Commission might want to discuss that tonight or at some other time. Thank you, Tony.
No problem.
Tony, I've got a question. We talked about the small mixed-use center, mixed retail, and we talked about having kind of condensed the, the smaller density homes around that, take advantage of transportation, walking, et cetera. Now, and then you, then we talked about not expanding that, but with the discussion, discussion about density transfers, how do we guarantee that we don't lose that piece of it? And, and that, how do we guarantee that retail center or that, whatever we want to call it, mixed-use center doesn't get any smaller than it is? Can we, can we control that and make sure that that doesn't get below the 10, what was it, 10, 10 gross acres? And then also, how do we manage the, the low-density housing around it? With, and I guess I'm just wanting to get into a situation where we don't decide that we, halfway down the road, we say, well, you know, it's a good idea, but we really don't want that, we want that to be more, larger homes around the residential area. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. How, how, you know, the intent, why we had the higher density around the, the Main Street was to provide the densities necessary to, to, to support public transportation.
Uh huh.
And I, I'm drawing a blank.
And I like the idea.
On this one a little bit.
The idea's a great idea, and I think it should be maintained, but when you start talking about density transfers, that concerns me a little bit, that, that density can tran-
That we lose that critical density necessary.
We lose that capability, and I don't want to lose that. I want to maintain that and control that somehow.
Okay.
Joe?
Sure.
The work to date, and as discussed at the Citizen Advisory Committee, placed those kinds of protections in the code. And that's not before you tonight, but just to share the thinking, was that there would be some flexibility to, to alter two adjacent sub-districts, not just geographically, as is described in Tony's report, but to, to change the acreage a little bit, but a limitation of only 10% associated with that. So that would apply that it could only shrink by 10% or grow by 10% during that process.
And so that small mixed-use area is included in that?
Correct.
So, so Tony's comments about, about limiting that area, we really wouldn't have to. And that wording doesn't need to be in there because it's controlled by the code, by the 10%.
Yeah, and, and I'm describing code that of course isn't part of this hearing, but, but that's the idea that was brought forward through the committee.
Sure. Well, no, and that's good. That's just what I wanted to hear, that we'd have, or at least that's what I would like to see written, is in the code, do we protect that?
The other thought in response to the question is, in the flexibility to allow some reshaping of the various densities, they can only do that when they're still showing compliance with the comprehensive plan policies. So the ability to show that you're supporting a vital Main Street, that you're supporting-
So the ability to show that you're supporting a vital main street, that you're supporting transit, or that you're doing a transition to lower densities, either the neighbors to the south or towards the ridge, all those things would still be part of the review.
Okay, great. Another question I had about population for the 16 acres per thousand. My assumption is that's thousands, per thousand residential.
Correct.
So when we get into a situation where we've got X percent is, is business-related, you know, I guess I want to kind of, how do we, how do we manage that, the size of that park? And is that, did we take the size of that park into account when we determine that, the amount of residential in the area today?
We're, we're working on how do we address it when there's no residential?
Okay.
How do we address the north employment campus park aspect of this? Because we're, we're currently silent on it.
Okay, that was my concern.
Okay.
All right, any other questions of staff this time? All right, thank you very much, Joe. Tony? All right, well, then I guess we will go out and open it up for public hearing, some more public discussion. Tony, do we have any?
I have Chris Cocker.
Chris?
I'm Chris Cocker with Planning Livability. I'm here on behalf of the Herberger family, owners of the Oregon City Golf Course. First, I wanted to say that we appreciated the opportunity to meet with staff and discuss some of the issues that we brought up in the last meeting, and it was very helpful to be able to sit down and talk about some of the issues and go through them. And we're very much in support of what was discussed, and basically agree with all the points except for maybe one, which I'd like to enter something into the record on, and I will pass a memo out to you.
We'll be entering this as Exhibit A.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Unfortunately, I was not able to look at the wording here until today, and of course, when I went to call Tony to talk to him about it, the city wasn't open today. So I would just like to say that essentially, the city, as it stands today, has about 8.9 acres per thousand residents, of which about 60% of that is developed acreage. So a lot of it is still remaining to be developed, pending funding. And as I think we all know, there are maintenance issues because we've got a very small staff as compared to many of the cities that were studied in the Parks and Rec master plan. And so that presents some issues, none of which we, I'm sure cannot, or we can cover them as time goes by, though. The question that I'm raising, though, has to do with the master plan language, and essentially, as I saw 16 acres per thousand residents, I realized that was a very large number as compared to what's in the city today. And my concern is that it's really not based on the actual median number of 422 park acres, which is the goal established in the Parks and Rec master plan. If you run the numbers based on the 2006 population for the city, they currently, the city has 258.2 acres, and the goal is 422 park acres. So in a very conservative way, I ran the numbers backwards to see what that meant on a per-thousand basis, using the same numbers. And I come up with a median number, which is 14.5 acres per thousand residents. And I believe that that was the intent of the master plan, or the language that's proposed in the master plan, which has yet to be adopted. So I just wanted to say that the language actually states that the 252, 258.2 would be increased to meet the ORPA median of 422 park acres. And again, I ran those numbers, and it comes out to close to 14.5 acres per thousand residents, which is still a very high number. I'm just trying to set the bar here at a, at a location that'll be a little more manageable to try and do the improvements, do the maintenance, and do all the things that need to be done. My little note at the bottom of the memo says that this figure is conservative because I wasn't able to get the numbers for the three projects that are mentioned to make up, or get, or attempt to get to the 422 park acres, Park Place, Beaver Creek, and the Cove developments. And if you do apply those numbers, the park acreage per thousand persons actually gets smaller. And so I think that 14.5 is a very conservative number. We could be looking at a lot less if you were actually to apply the numbers of people that are coming in with those projects. So the benchmark is really the 422 acres, which is, is what I'm basing this on. So what I'm requesting is that we go to a, a number that is defensible in the Parks and Rec master plan at the 14.5 acre figure per thousand.
Okay.
Another, I have another, wanted to address the question of the types of uses along the ridge area. We had brought, and had some, the Shitari Wellness Group come in. They're one of the ones that could possibly come in along that edge. We're looking at eco-friendly development in the form of, say, possibly an eco-hotel along that area. Restaurants, a cafe, a coffee shop, perhaps, maybe bike rental and repair place. I mean, it's going to be a park area, we want it to be used, those kinds of uses. And I don't know if you know, a business like Hot Lips Pizza out of Portland, very sustainable in the way they do their business, that kind of use as well. So, just some ideas. I think I've got one more point here. Just wanted to mention the ponds. I think you brought up the ponds. We're well aware of the location of the ponds and the fact that we've got a well that serves those ponds that is now, it's 1,400-plus feet deep in the ground. It brings water out of the ground at a 68-degree temperature, and we're looking at alternatives for what we could do with that water, considering we've got it as an existing source, and, you know, exploring some ideas as to how to sustainably use that water and perhaps, you know, just take advantage of that. I think that was about it. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Okay.
Which version of the Parks and Rec master plan are you referencing?
I didn't check the dates, but it's the one that's online now, so I assume it's the latest.
Tony, is that the, the draft for the proposed plan that you just told me about, or is this the existing plan?
I guess I'd have to know which one he, I imagine the one online is the existing plan. The proposed one is, is coming before you in a month.
So is there a difference?
I believe so, yes, there is.
Well, I, I went to Parks and Rec on the online, and the first item is master plan, actually spelled incorrectly, but.
I'll have, I'll have to look.
You might want to change it.
Okay. Maybe we could forward this to Scott and?
I, that's what I'd feel comfortable, since Scott gave me the 16 per thousand.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what population he used to come up with that number. So I guess I'd, I'd like to get his input on 14 and 1/2 versus 16.
Can I enter something else into the record?
Certainly.
I took the table from that plan, which I have right here, and actually, the 16-acre figure, or 16 acres per thousand, is an average number that comes from the report that was done. They actually did a survey of 39 cities, Oregon City being one of 39, and that average was 16.17. The median is a different number, obviously, and I don't mean to insult anybody here, but the, the median, I'm just going to explain what it is, is that half of the acreages would be above and half would be below. And what that tends to do is get rid of some of the anomalies that are in the survey, because with 39, you've got some really odd examples in there, 39, one of which is sitting in this table, and it says, we've got one city that has 113.71 acres per thousand residents, which calculated out to be about a city of 89,000 people, and you've got over 10,000 acres, 98% of which are, happen to be improved. That is way out of anybody's normal zone. And you can look at it from the other, they've got the least amount of land example as well. And what you'd want to do as the median is you tend to take, you kind of average those out, but if you end up with an average number, you're going to end up with a number that's much higher because of this one high figure for population, a sample of about 39.
Right.
So, but I'd like to put this in the record as well.
Okay. That'll be Exhibit B, I'll bet.
C.
C.
Jumped the gun a little. And this, this does look like Mr. Cocker's referencing the, the Parks and Rec master plan that is going, that is going to be coming before you. This is the proposed language right here.
Okay. All right, any other questions, Mr. Cocker this time? All right, thanks very much, Chris. Tony, any other?
Ken Allen. And he submitted two maps, identified as zoning district and parcel diagrams, and they're entered as Exhibit B.
I'm Wayne Hall, mine, we're supposed to.
You got the order wrong.
Okay, good. I don't know what the final vote was on the annexation. It was like 60 votes? 67?
61.
61? Okay. Well, I'm not here to tell you what your job is, and I'm just going to tell you my opinion, but it is my opinion that the golf course property, with all the people that play there from the city, and with the annexation of Park Place, I really don't think they have a chance of getting annexed. It's something to think about, and you might want to think about a Plan B, or whatever it might be, but I just don't see it. The way our property is all cut up, and I mentioned this before in the meetings, that is, it's actually cost us the sale. So I guess what I'm saying, trying to say to you is, I don't know what to say. So from this point, I'm going to let Ken take over. Okay?
Well, kind of to bring a little bit of clarity to the annexation vote, the 122 acres that are affirmed, Northwest Development Solutions and myself represented, three property owners that passed on Tuesday of last week, and by a narrow margin, but I wanted to make a couple of points. One, we spent $0 in promoting that, and we did that consciously because we said, we stepped back and said, we want to see what the city of Oregon City residents want to do. And you can, you know, in effect, buy some propaganda, I can't say you can buy the vote, but you definitely can get some more exposure. So we put, you know, if you picked up your voter's pamphlet, there's a in favor of and opposed, and we just let the chips fall where they did. The citizens voted while it was a narrow margin, they annexed the property, and we think that was mainly because of the jobs that were represented by this concept plan. Adjacent properties don't have that at all. There are no jobs being created, maybe a very small amount, and the jobs that Chris Cocker talks about, I added up briefly, is maybe 10,000 square feet total. So at 200 square feet, 250 square feet per person on an average, that's not very many jobs. The responsibility of the Hall family, Roberts, and Getteman falls squarely on their shoulders to create all these jobs on their property. The exhibits that I've given you, and I don't know, Tony, if you can, I just brought one copy for you guys, we can, obviously, there's two different maps here. One of them is, and really what we're trying to do here is explain to you and show you that how this concept plan, while it all is well and good in Hall, the blue dotted line, and these are two different maps, and I apologize, we don't have five separate copies here, but one of the maps is basically the Roberts, Hall, and Getteman properties, and one of them is the Herberger property. You can see where the blue line, the blue dotted line falls. It's absolutely irregular as to dissecting the property right down the middle, or the concept of the vision. My question is, and I definitely would wait for response, or we can get that after we are off, but how, how do you propose that works itself out? And it's a simple question. I understand, we've developed for years, that can be mostly worked out at the master plan level, but when you've got densities and you only are allowing 10% fluctuation in numbers, or, you know, gross acreage, that's not enough to configure the Hall property in this case properly to accommodate the different uses. So you can see the actual property lines affect the use of the property. So that's a question there, how's that going to work? The site configuration, and how does that work with the transfer densities? I just need to understand that a little bit more. And more importantly, the Hall's, Gettemans', and Roberts' families need to know, how does that work? Because they're not cooperating with the Herberger family. They're not working together. So while the concept plan is all well and good, and it's all kumbaya, happy, everybody working together, that's not how life works, these properties. This property's been annexed, their property has not been annexed. Will it be annexed? We don't know that. Will it be developed at the same timeline? Will infrastructure be put in place at the same timelines? Latecomers agreements, all those things have to be put in place, but it's pretty critical to be thinking about individual properties here, and especially when you're talking about 122 acres, which is over the majority of the property within this concept plan. Couple other real quick points. You mentioned, Paul, the eco-enterprise zone. I took it upon myself to work with Clackamas County and the state of Oregon to deem this site an eco-enterprise zone specific, and the city of Oregon City didn't want to have those discussions until all these approvals were done. And it's a city-sponsored, let's say, activity. So I tried to push that along myself as a private citizen and developer. I think the state is interested in that, but once all these approvals are in place, maybe that can happen. And, you know, there are enterprise zones out there, and the notion of having it be a eco-enterprise zone, you know, is a kind of a novel idea, specifically to jobs creation, and there are some state monies there to be had. So we'd be interested in carrying that torch when that time arrives again, for us to be able to do that. Couple other things, just being quite blunt, 10 acres in the main street retail isn't big enough. 20 acres, we've asked for this repeatedly. 20 acres is the minimum size to bring a neighborhood, regional center, and I don't mean region in the sense of like Clackamas Town Center, Washington Square, or even a Bridgeport. We're talking about 20 acres is not that much land. You truly do need to look at how that can work, and it can work by simply allowing retail to happen in the, I don't know if I'll get my proper terminology here, but the West mixed-use area, or is it the MEV areas? So Main Street is 10 acres dedicated, but if you allowed first-floor retail in the MEV, mixed-use, Employment Village, that would work, and you wouldn't have to necessarily change the plan, it's a simple thing. Retail- Retail in the suburbs will not work, it'll die, actually, it won't even go there on the second floor, and that's, we've polled probably 10 different commercial brokers, and it's just not going to work. I mean, that's reality, that's the market conditions. Could it work, maybe 10, 15, 20 years down the road? Possibly. If that's the horizon, then maybe that's okay to reserve it for that, but it barely works in a real urban setting. So in a suburban setting, definitely not. So you should be aware of that market constraint. That's uneasy, rather than saying, oh, let's expand the Main Street to 20 acres, you could actually just say, hey, in the MEV, you could offer retail on the main floor, and that would help that anyway, and blend it. And then that would, we could accomplish that at the master plan level again. Couple more points, real quick. We actually like the open space, 14 acres, 16 acres, whatever that number is, is fine. What I think needs to happen is it needs to be dispersed throughout the community, and not just this linear, you know, configuration. We were the ones, our company and our consultants brought in the notion of preserving open space and creating higher density areas, but we, our intent, and it was unintentional here, our intent wasn't to make it Central Park, as we know, we wanted to disperse that. It was graphically shown that way, and being candid, that was a mistake on our part, that's not what we intended to see, and it, I think people just kind of latched onto that, and it's easy. But why not take that same 16 acres and spread it over the whole site, and, you know, sprinkle it throughout? It makes it more sense, it makes more sense, it makes it accessible by more people quicker, rather than this big Central Park that, quite frankly, you know, only a couple landowners bear the burden of that, not just, you know, not everybody throughout the whole, the whole site. And then the, kind of the last thing is, and I think you heard, you've heard from Terry Emmert and his associates and representatives, the North Employment Campus, I understand that is a requirement for this whole approval. Just so you know, you're putting that land in itself, you're putting on reserve for 40 or 50 years, because there is not one user to date, and we've been on this project for 18 months, we have gotten no users interested at all in industrial land, as we know it, the blue, the blue on this map. So the market conditions just aren't there, and I'm not talking about residential and the loan issues there of residential, but, you know, mixed use, or excuse me, not mixed use, but industrial land, it's tough. So it seems like we could take a look at the North Employment Campus and allow, why not allow some of the commercial uses in that, still allow it for industrial, but also allow some mixed use. I mean, an employer in Oregon City wanting to go in the, in the blue section here would be great, regardless of the use, an employer. So think about that, we're trying to create jobs, so why not just increase the uses there? You can leave it labeled NEC, still have that as an opportunity, but maybe just look at the mixed employment village and lay some of that on, so it would be kind of a blue, purple mix, if you want to call it that, just for simplicity. That's all I had. Any, any questions, or Wayne, did you have any?
Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you. Any questions? This time? Okay. Thank you very much. Of course you can.
Elizabeth Grazer Lindsey, and she submitted testimony and additional information, and it'll be marked Exhibit D.
Thanks. My name's Elizabeth Grazer Lindsey. I've represented the Hamlet of Beaver Creek during the Citizen Advisory Committee meetings. As I showed at the previous hearing that you had, the Hamlet of Beaver Creek is concerned that the Beaver Creek Road concept plan is not providing the industrial land that was promised in the 2002 process. The process on developing the concept plan has been focused so extensively on what there would be in addition to industrial, that some of the work that should be done on actually the industrial land itself hasn't been adequately planned. For example, in industrial land, if we want this to be green and sustainable, we ought to be giving some attention to how to have that be clean and safe for our community. So we ought to have some provisions in the plan that consider how to protect the soil and groundwater and runoff from different possible chemicals and other things that could be generated on this site. So I think that that should be part of the process to make sure that this plan is properly put together. The industrial zoning, we just heard the suggestion that include commercial, well, instead of including commercial, we, if you look at some of the planning that's been done, it excludes many of possible industrial uses, and there hasn't been any explanation on why that's happening. But it reduces the uses that can be put there by different businesses that are needing industrial land. Right now, the concept plan hasn't been dealing with the issue of concurrency of industrial development and the proposed commercial and residential development. Without the concurrency issue being dealt with, it's quite possible, and actually likely, if you listen to the testimony we just heard, that the commercial and residential uses could precede the industrial uses by years, or even by decades, which isn't the purpose of this site. This would defeat the purpose of trying to improve the jobs-to-housing ratio in the Oregon City area. It'd also get in the way of reducing the amount of commuting that local residents have to do to get to their jobs in other parts of the region, and it actually increases the burden on the regional transportation system as opposed to lessening it. There continue to be family-owned businesses in our area that are interested in the industrial land, as I've shared at the past meetings. I have a new testimony to that effect that I submitted tonight, and I wanted to share what they said. "We require appropriately zoned industrial land that will allow us to run our business without conflict. We have had a difficult time finding affordable property in the Oregon City area. Our desire is to keep our business close to home is becoming increasingly more difficult. We would like to think that small businesses like ours would be an important access, asset to our local area." So we do have small businesses in our area that actually are interested in industrial land, although that is hard to tell from the kind of process we've gone through. But we haven't really made an effort to identify these people and talk to them and see what their needs are. We've been planning in the abstract without looking at the real needs. There's other concerns that people have shared with me on how we should be going if we actually are trying to prepare for the future in a green or sustainable way. And someone shared with me some comments recently about how with the peak oil situation going on that we hear about frequently now, that there, in the next 20 years, there could easily be not fuel available for private vehicles, we'll have to go to a different kind of a strategy. And so when we're doing planning right now, we should be thinking towards those future years, and think, and not creating a situation where we're investing a lot of money and resources into something that will be obsolete, which some people call a stranded investment, different ways to think about it. In addition, the density at this site is so great that we're having, in some of the papers, it sounds like about 50% of the land will be covered with impermeable surfaces between the buildings and the road surfaces, which seems really excessive. There's some other concerns I had. It appeared that the park might just end up being empty land. It appears from some of the documentation that there's no provision for it actually to be made into like ball fields in some of the areas. I mean, of course, you want some that's natural, but there's also a need for it to be usable by the young people, maybe they need to have some playgrounds and these things. It doesn't appear that that's being taken care of. The LEED standards was supposed to be fundamental to this concept plan, but it hasn't yet been developed into the plan. So it seems like it's premature to have the plan go forward when we don't have some of the most fundamental components of it in place. With 1,500 housing units that are being proposed for this site, there should be a local elementary school that's right into this plan, and right now, that's sort of like a side issue there, there's no guarantee anything happens, it's not planned to be on the site, and that ought to be in there in order to keep moving forward with this. And I had, I noticed that some of the editing that had been proposed at the last couple Citizen Advisory Committee meetings of the concept plan document that you have, that that editing wasn't completed, some of the titles of people on the, for example, are not correct. I have that in the written documentation, but I was just wondering why the editing hadn't been completed on the documents you have. And I had a question for you. I was assuming that you have the minutes and documents of the Citizen Advisory Committee meetings and the Technical Advisory Committee meetings, that that's part of the documentation that you have available to you and that you're using in this process? That's a question.
Ah. Well, you know, to be honest with you, I, I can't go and pull out the whole list, tell you right now if it's in there or not, but I have heard through lots of different reports of what happened in there, and I think we've seen some minutes from them, but I can't tell you, Elizabeth, exactly what's there.
Do you at least have the file available to you?
Oh, sure.
As you're working with this?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else, Tony?
I do not have any other requests to speak, I guess we can just ask if...
Okay, anyone else like to speak at this time? All right, guess not. Then let's close the public hearing at this time, and bring back up here to the commission I have a couple of things I wanted to talk about, I've heard from, just from what I've heard tonight, talk about, you know, the industrial land and the industrial opportunity. You know, that can change literally overnight. I mean, in my, and I'm certainly not a realtor, and I'm not a developer, and I don't know, but I'm, but I read the papers, and I also see what's happening with the oil prices, and, you know, it seems to me that more and more people are looking to work closer to home. And it seems to me that more and more companies are being driven to do that. Either you're going to work from home, or you're going to, or you're going to try and locate your, your building or your facility somewhere where the bulk of your people are. I mean, I've seen it in Hillsborough, I've seen it in Beaverton, the land was cheap, and that's why they're out there, and there was good transportation and infrastructure. Today, you know, that's, that's a great opportunity, we've got one big chunk of land out there that's available, and, you know, with the right marketing and the right advertising, I think there could be some changes there. Again, I'm, I'm not a specialist on this, but it just seems to me, the higher the gas prices go, the closer people are going to want to be home. So, you know, we, we talk about the infrastructure, and it's, and again, you know, this is a plan, and so to try and get all the little nitty-gritty things done, it's just, it's impossible, we're not going to be able to do it this time, that's what a master planning process is for. This plan is to say, yeah, this is a good idea, here's, here's the criteria that we should be working under, but go out and make it work, and get the master planning, and get everybody involved, and, and everybody can work together, and we can determine what we need to do here. And that's, that's got to happen, and if it doesn't happen, then we won't build there. I mean, if we don't, if we don't have the requirement, if the, if the developers aren't there, there's not going to be any money. City certainly doesn't have it to develop the infrastructure, so the developers have got to be involved. The, the property owners have got to be involved. If all of these things don't come together, there won't be any building, but at least we'll have a plan, and that's the key, in my mind, there's got to be a plan in place to get this moving forward. You know, I think there is a, a, a good amount of industrial land, and I think there are some good uses that could be, that could come here. And I just, and I love the idea of the eco-friendly, I love the concept and putting that all together. We don't have a LEEDs program today, but we, in this, in this application, or in this document, we're recommending that we have a LEED, a group that will be together to have a LEEDs program for the master planning process. So, you know, again, it's, it's, it's a plan, and we're just starting at the very beginning of this piece. My belief is, I mean, this, looking at all I've seen, I'm pretty excited about what I've seen at this point, I think there's a lot of work to do, and I just, and I think we, we need to look at it, again, from, we got to look at the future, and, and today, what the future looks like to me is more and more people are going to be trying to get home, and trying to get closer to their homes. So I, I believe there's a huge potential for this property. That's just my opinion. So, more discussion.
I'm sorry, could we maybe jump in real quick, and I could have Joe come up?
Sure.
And we could maybe just tick down a couple of these issues that were raised, might help a little bit, just clarify.
Sure, but I wanted to talk first.
And we will certainly sit back and wait and listen some more.
And I'm done.
We might raise more questions than we need to answer.
I'm done, you can go.
I'm sorry, sir.
I guess we could, I guess, I'd like to hear, I'd have Joe respond to, you know, kind of the, where we, how we came up with the 10 acres, the neighborhood commercial, where that came from, and, you know, extending commercial uses into that North Employment Campus. Our goal up there is to be Title IV compliant with Metro for the, for the industrial uses, employment uses in that area, we don't want to dilute it. You know, that's, that's a policy decision that the city needs to make, is it enough acreage? Is it the appropriate uses in that area being title, being compliant? You know, the goal is to protect the land, so that we do have it. If, you know, but then it comes back to the policy decision of, you know, if it takes longer, if it does take longer, you know, what incentives can we offer to make it occur faster? You know, I think those are discussions that can continually go on, depending on how the area does develop. So I guess, I just kind of addressed that one. And then as far as the relation of the concept plan uses, zone, districts as related to property lines, we're identifying these to be, some properties will be split zoned, that's just, that's the way it will have to happen in this area, and if there's not cooperation amongst property owners, you know, unfortunately, that's the way the land use process works sometimes. We've identified the uses that we want, we've offered as much flexibility as we think is prudent. If there's disagreement about that, you know, we do have a land use process to go through and, and request changes to that. But this is the concept plan, we need to identify general uses, where they're located, identify the acreages necessary to be compliant, and then we move forward from there.
Yeah, the other, the other issue I'd like you to address is if, if, let's say, only one small piece of this, let's say the residential and some of the retail are able to be developed because of the, the financial situation, or because of the, the market conditions, you know, is that enough to build the infrastructure needed for this, for this program?
Okay. Maybe I'll start there, and then, and then talk about, about some of the issues that were raised. The short answer is probably not. The, if, if a very small amount of residential and a small amount of retail were to come forward, just, I mean, without a full analysis, but my, my own kind of opinion is that the improvements required to Beaver Creek Road, that the extension of water and sewer lines, those would be fairly challenged. And so not only is the idea of getting a complete and sustainable and integrated community more attached to blocks of land coming in, under the master plan process, but the provision of infrastructure out here is also in that category as well. So somebody may be able to find a portion of the site where it's relatively easy to extend some lines and get some development going, but I think that's more the exception than the rule.
Mm-hmm.
I won't get all of the issues that were, that were raised, but for the ones that I made notes on, Tony summarized the situation well on the alignment of land uses and parcel lines. We did not do a specific alignment of those. We took the approach that some properties would be split zoned, we have relatively large cluster... We have relatively large clusters of ownership when you consider all the tax lots put together under either the golf course or the Hall family. And I understand that, you know, there will be differences, of course, within owners. But we, we did take a large area approach. The sort of compromise to that is that the master plan doesn't apply to an entire ownership. It applies to 40 acres. So, a individual split zoned couple of properties, what they need to do together is put together a 40-acre contiguous chunk that they can come in with master planning. And that, it sort of splits the difference between getting enough area going but not requiring a 200-acre, for example, master plan. On retail, there was a multiple requests to enlarge the retail. And the advice from the team and the advisory committee went with it was to keep it relatively modest at 10 acres. A 20-acre center, if you develop it at suburban densities, would yield you over 200,000 square feet of retail. If you ramp it up to sustainable densities, which I think this site deserves, you could go up to 300,000 or more. That's a lot of retail. And frankly, the draw of the traffic into the area could offset all the benefits that supposedly come around, come along with being a little bit more market scaled. So, we took the smallest, beautiful approach and kept it to about 10 acres, which can still yield a medium-sized anchor of some sort that is anchoring a small center.
Before we get off that, can you address the idea of the blended residential, kind of like we're doing on Seventh Street Corridor, where we have a first floor resident, or first floor retail, second floor residential, third floor office?
Yeah.
And why wouldn't that, why wouldn't that blended thing work? And, and, you know, and if we limit the size of those locations, you know, perhaps we're not looking more, we're not looking at a mall-type environment. We're looking at more of a Main Street-type environment.
I agree. And the committee agrees in hindsight. The purple area, mixed employment village, the suggestion was made that that be allowed to have ground floor retail as long as you have vertical uses above it. Good idea. And the code, the draft code already provides for that. I checked it quickly after the suggestion was made. The West Mixed Use Neighborhood and the East Mixed Use Neighborhood also allow retail to be integrated in. There's been some size limitations placed in the draft code at 15,000 square feet, if memory serves. And with vertical, I think, vertical mixed allowed in the West Mixed Use District. So, that idea of blending and being able to have a Main Street core but mixed use configured in the lands adjacent to it is part of the proposal.
Okay. Good.
The, the idea of moving open space around, it is allowed. Sort of struck me sitting here that maybe it ought to be required. But what we've done is we've recrafted the language such that now we have a, an approach on the amount of acreage that's required, that a component of that does need to be some sort of continuous central open space and, but only a component. And there's flexibility to shape it, to disperse it, to work with natural topography and to make the kind of connections with other green spaces that I think the testimony here has been suggesting is a good thing. Moving down to a couple of the other comments, the, the discussion with local businesses about locating in this area, I think it's a fair comment that we didn't go out and survey people and so on. It would have been good if they'd come forward and I think an add to the process, frankly. What we did do is more of a long-range and regional analysis, trying to answer the question of, is there enough regional demand out there to fill up 150 acres or so of, of employment land in this area over about a 20-year-plus timeframe? The answer back was yes. And that's, that's not at the exclusion of thinking locally, but it's, it's with the understanding that there's very much regional dynamics going on. Whether it's a local business or whether it's somebody coming new to the Portland area, they have choices. They will basically say to themselves, okay, here are my site criteria, and I think they can be met in Beaver Creek Road, South Shore, or Wilsonville. I'm going to look at some sites and compare those and see which one I can afford and which ones meet my parameters. That's how most of the industrial siting decisions make, get made. So, we did take that regional look to try and make sure that we were, we were within the parameters of those long-term decisions. And I certainly hope a lot of businesses locally choose this site to move to or expand to. Excellent suggestion that it be kind of part of the city's program to promote that and be a facilitator of that. The comment's been made twice that the density is too high. And I wanted to offer a couple of thoughts on that. One, in terms of the local thinking of the steering committee, from the very first half an hour of the very first meeting, the committee was talking about a complete and sustainable community. So, they were trying to, to look towards a concept of living, working, playing, doing a whole variety of things within this one site. Great idea. It's carried through to the end. Along with that comes some responsibilities to the region, that if you are going to put residential as part of that mix, then it has to be done at minimum densities. The average density, if you add it all up, is about 10 units per acre. So, and that's Metro's regional requirement. So, taking the, a little larger view than just the West Mixed Use Neighborhood, but looking out across the entirety of the yellow that's on the map, we're really at regional minimums. And I think the design and scale of particular areas does need to be very carefully handled. Second perspective is a little bit more of a national perspective. If you look at the LEED neighborhood development criteria, there's a category in there that's called, I need to remind myself, neighborhood patterns. And it's actually, actually a pretty requisite to score points within that, that you provide compact development. I don't know what their lowest threshold is, but in our region, the lowest minimum of compact development is about 10 units per acre. So, the plan is kind of LEED ND compliant in that, in that respect. And to take it down actually would be counter to some of the sustainability goals in LEED Last comment, that the edits that were suggested by the committee in their final meetings have not actually been put into the documents yet. That's true because we were waiting to get through the planning commission's process to do one cohesive edits of what the steering committee offered at the end and also the issues that came up during this proceeding.
Okay. So, am I correct in saying that with, with this current plan that we have now, I mean, as it's written, if, as long as we maintain a, the residential piece and as long as we maintain the industrial piece and the retail piece, we have a lot of flexibility in how we, when we get to the master planning, how we create that? I mean, from what, everything I read. I mean, there's nothing really set in stone, per se.
I'd go maybe just a little bit different than that. There is a lot of flexibility to, to work with the unique site conditions and the amounts of these uses. But you can't do something like pick up the red here and, and move it up to here without doing a comprehensive plan amendment.
Right.
But could you take that red and shape it to go like so, to shape it to go like so, to work with an integrated mixed-use concept, still honoring this? That as an example, absolutely.
Okay.
I think there's plenty of flexibility and, and really, it's going to be this balance between flexibility and the guidance of the plan that's, that's going to be the real...
And the market conditions. I mean, you know, we're, if we get 10 years down the road here and we're looking at, at industrial, the industrial complex up there and determine that there's no market for it, I mean, we have to evaluate what it's, what's really going to happen, I think.
And that's what periodic review of the whole city's comprehensive plan is for, is to keep a regular monitoring of that every five to seven years.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate Joe.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
I think the other thing brought up was the concurrency of the industrial land as related to the commercial and residential lands. That was discussed at the committee level, and it was actually put forward to a vote of whether they, the group felt that they wanted to say, you know, X industrial land acres need to be developed prior to X residential or X commercial, creating thresholds for the residential and commercial dependent upon the industrial. And the committee was uncomfortable requiring that just due to different ownerships. One property may have an opportunity to develop and they'd be tied to another developer or another property owner who wasn't interested. So, it was brought forward. It was discussed quite a bit, and it was voted, and there was, there was not support on the committee to, to forward that recommendation. But it's, it's a novel concept. I mean, if industrial, you know, there's multiple ways to look at that issue.
But it sounds to me like Joe answered my question, that if we, if we don't develop these things along the same lines, there, there won't be enough money to develop them properly or even more sustainable, real, true sustainable development.
There are some large infrastructure costs, correct?
Yeah. And unless somebody's willing to come up with those upfront, there, it won't happen. Okay? Any other thoughts?
No, I would agree with you that it's difficult to predict the future. And it seems to me that, that the way that, that the property is purchased and used is dependent upon market conditions. And when, when property in the city's annexed, things will happen to its property value. I think in general, the property values go up. But I guess my point is I don't want to try to engage in, in a guessing game of what happens in the future to, to, to some property that's been on the market for a long time. Because I don't think that's what this concept plan is about. What this concept plan is about is trying to shape an area for the city in preparation or in anticipation of that area being incorporated as a part of the city. So, I, I appreciate the argument about, about property sitting in the market for a long time and not having been purchased, but I can't tell you what's going to happen tomorrow.
That's right. Okay.
Well, I guess, I like what Elizabeth said about looking at other strategies because we don't know what's going to happen. And the one thing that's impressed me about this project is the word sustainability, which, Joe, you mentioned, you said, living, working, playing in that area. And I, I think there's a lot of work to do there as far as defining what that really means to be sustainable. We haven't talked about food production and whether we're going to have small farms on the, in the city limits there. But it's, it's that type of thing we need to start looking at. Are we going to change our strategies or are we going to go with conventional wisdom? And I think at some point, as this plan is done, we're starting to look at, maybe looking at things differently. And so, the components of maybe looking at the LEED standards, I think that's a real positive thing. And I, I like that recommendation in there. And just the flexibility, that's what we're talking about here. I think we're trying to make this as flexible as possible to meet all the needs that are here now and in the near future. So, at this point, I really like what's here.
Thank you.
I guess some of my concerns throughout the process have been sort of, I've been at a 30,000-foot level trying to figure out what's going to happen when we get down to about a 10,000-foot level and taking a step back, looking at the concept plan level. I like what I see at a concept plan level. I just want to make sure, you know, we don't forget some of the concerns we had in terms of what we brought up of, of infrastructure needs, schools and those type of things as we drill down to an actual plan level. But from a concept plan level, I like what I see so far, pretty much.
And I think we'll see code, you know, that addresses these things, and we'll have many opportunities to address that as well.
Right.
As we go through this process, along with anybody that's interested. It's a public process.
Yeah. I too feel, I think the hardest part for most people when it comes to this kind of project is, is thinking about this at such a large level. And, and it's just the most basic planning kind of thing, a concept plan, just what is it, where does it stop and what happens after it? There's lots to do after it. But as a concept plan, you know, typically in the old days, and I'm an architect, so I've been involved in lots of things over the years, but nothing that I've worked on or been a part of or associated with has come anywhere close to this kind of concept plan. Boy, does it have lots of hurdles, for sure. But just integrating, you know, that this is a complete and sustainable community, trying to project the future, that's right, it is hard to predict how the industrial is all going to happen. It hasn't happened so far in that area, but that's not, this is a 20-year window, 20-year window. We've got a plan for a 20-year window. This is a responsible, this is a responsible thing to do. That's kind of just generally where I'm at with this.
Okay. Well, I'll just say, I'm, I'm just real impressed with what I've seen so far and everybody working and, while it may not look to you like working together, it sure has been a pretty impressive operation in my mind. I thought Park Place was pretty, pretty great when I first saw it, but this is even better in my mind of how, of the cooperation, the involvement of everybody, the ability to, staff to turn on a dime and come back to us with some things that are going to work for everybody. I'm, I'm real excited about it and I'm, I thoroughly support this. And I'd like to move forward. I'd love to see it build out in the next five years, but I don't see that happening just yet. But, but, but the potential it offers this city is, is just terrific. So, we have a proposed motion on page six.
Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
If I may, real quick, you know, we did talk about the, the eco-enterprise zone.
Ah, yes.
That might be appropriate to add into the second paragraph there of the proposed motion as part of the Green Standards Task Force, is something they could review? And then I think that concerning the amount of acreage per thousand for the parks, you know, the city commission hearings will be public, public hearing. We can submit information at that time. I could, if you so desire to move this forward, we can work with Scott Archer, make sure that that gets updated in front of the city commission. You know, maybe your recommendation to us is work with Scott to clarify what the city standard is, and the city commission can address, you know, if it's 15 versus 14 and a half or 16, they can, they can make that policy decision in consultation with Mr. Archer.
Okay. Do you have some language for the, the second paragraph then?
I would just, perhaps just insert eco and eco-enterprise zone before the semicolon, before the and at the end of that phrase.
I think that'd be perfect.
And then, and then another addition would be to work, have staff work with Scott Archer to clarify the acres per thousand.
Correct.
So, do we have a motion or further discussion?
Just one other clarification, I think, on the proposed motion. The proposed motion is inclusive of the, of the modifications from Joe Dill's November 6th memo. Is that true?
It is. Correct.
Okay. Who wants a motion? We can read it or not?
Well, just a clarification. Well, and the recommendation on the green standards, would that be coming to us as the planning commission? And make, well, both, and making recommendations concerning green building standards. Are they making recommendations to...
It would have to come, it would have to be, because most likely, it's going to be some type of a zoning language.
Right.
Whether, that would, that would have to go into the codes. That'd be a legislative hearing process. It would come before the planning commission for any code change.
Would, would that be a part of the code change? Or we're looking at, that's going to be much later down...
It's just going to, it's going to depend on how the timing works out of the process.
So, we want to date there.
You know, the, the planning commission is going to be seeing the Beaver Creek Code at the, we're proposing the February 11th Planning Commission meeting of 2008. At that time, depending on where we're at in that Green Standards Task Force process, the commission certainly has the discretion to say, we want to wait, we'll move forward, and we'll address this as, when it's ready. I think that we... I think that we can address that at that time.
All right, thank you.
So, could you read this, your proposed motion in entirety with the, with the changes so that we can know where we're getting a vote on here?
Sure.
Please.
A motion recommending adoption of the city commission, to the city commission of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, narrative, appendices, and concept plan goals and policies, amending the City of Oregon City Comprehensive Plan and adopting updates to the ancillary documents to the Comprehensive Plan in order to implement the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, including the Oregon City Transportation System Plan, Oregon City Water Master Plan, Oregon City Sanitary Sewer Master Plan, Oregon City Parks and Rec Plan, and Oregon City Trails Master Plan. And recommending the creation of a Green Standards Task Force to review and make recommendations concerning green building standards for residential, commercial, and industrial uses and the opportunity to implement an eco-enterprise zone. And working with Scott Archer of the Community Services Division to determine the appropriate acreage of parks per thousand, setting for the date certain of January 16th, 2008, for a public hearing before the city commission to consider adoption of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan and ancillary documents, and setting forth the date certain of February 11th, 2008, to review the revised Comprehensive Plan Map, zoning and subdivision code amendments, including Oregon City Municipal Code 17.14, a new R5 Zone District, and clear and objective design standards for implementation of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan.
Thank you, Tony. I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Tony, would you call, roll please?
Commissioner Stein.
Aye.
Commissioner Gruner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn.
Aye.
Commissioner Lejoa.
Aye.
Chairperson Paul.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We appreciate everybody's involvement. Thank you again. Let's see here, do we have anything for the, the commission?
Not at this time. Our next meeting will be the December 12th, I'm sorry, it's December 10th, Planning Commission meeting, 7:00 PM here. We've got a pretty full agenda, so.
Okay. I got a email from you regarding the land use planning on the computer, the land use class, I guess it was, or planning class. Is that something that we can access later? As I wasn't available that day, is that something?
I've, I've attended both of those at Portland State, and there's a grad student there in the urban studies program, and his project is to create an online library of planning commission issues that are going to be available. So, they are there now.
Oh, right.
Streaming video, and they're also streaming live when they conduct the classes.
Super.
We can certainly see if we can find that link for you and just forward it on to you.
Thank you, that would be great. I, I do want to do that, I just was unavailable. Excellent. Okay, then we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.